Which is approving the employment agreements for the Riedel Employees Association, Riedel Police Officers Association, and five of the city's contract employees. So those five contract employees would be the chief of police, the water and wastewater superintendents, the city clerk, and the community development director. So it does not include the city manager, it does not include the finance director, who we have an interim finance director at the moment, not a permanent full-time finance director. So getting back to item J1, with the permission of the mayor, we can dive into item J1.
Absolutely.
Okay. So item J1 starts at the front of your packet. So the adoption of the attached resolution, the item formally implements the Coffin Associates' salary ranges as recommended by the consultant. So Coffin Associates, if the council will recall, was brought on board, and let me grab my timeline here for that. So in the past couple of years of labor negotiations, we've been doing labor negotiations every year for the past five or six years. It has been brought up to the 2010 compensation study, has been brought up numerous times, and then the need for a newer updated compensation study has been brought up at labor negotiations for multiple years. So in FY 1920, funds were appropriated and direction was given from the council to begin the process to find a consultant who could do a compensation study. So this would be a third-party professional study to take a look at the jobs in the city and what would be an appropriate and competitive wage for all of the positions in the city. This is in response to, you know, some pretty bad attrition numbers, in particular over 2018, we lost eight employees, you know, that's pretty close to half of the employee workforce. And then a pretty steady attrition rate at four or five for the past two years of employees. And in the past, those numbers have been pretty significantly lower. And so one of the areas that, you know, was pretty clear through the labor negotiations, employees felt that this was not, you know, competitive environment to keep and retain employees. And so hence the Coff and Associates study, staff did put out an RFP after the budget was delivered. And then we got to January 7th of 2020 and authorized the agreement with Coff and Associates, who were responsive to the bid, and gave a fair competitive price. Then in March, March 17th, Coff returned to discuss the changes and the study as it was being undertaken, and council gave some direction that they wanted to see the comparator agencies changed. So those comparator agencies were changed and amended, and then the study was finally presented to the council back on July 21st of this year with a discussion with the council. And then on August 4th, 2020, there was a 5-0 vote to accept the final total compensation study. And Karen, I know there had been some questions about the, about the actual motion that the council adopted for that particular meeting, can you go back over and just confirm that it was a 5-0 vote to accept the final total compensation study?
That is correct. On August 4th, the vote was 5-0 to accept it as presented, with the changes with the comparator agencies.
So yeah, so the study, study's been completed, we have attached to the agenda item on page two is the proposed new salary schedule for the positions across the city as recommended by Coff. That's Resolution 1464-2020. And then we also kept and placed the old salary schedule, starting on page five, so that's Resolution 1428-2019 that the council approved back in July of last year. So you can compare the two salary ranges between, between the two, the two positions. So this really just deals with the, with the base salary table. There would be a position Y-rated in this, in this particular case, so that would be the city clerk's position would be Y-rated, which just means maintaining the current pay. And that pretty much covers this particular item. I'm happy to try to answer any questions that the, that the council has. And this again is had, is not related to the contracts for the, for the employees, but is, is related to adopting a new amended salary table based upon the results from Coff So I'll return it to the mayor. Let's see if there's any questions from the council.
Mayor Garance, I have a question for the city manager. You have unmuted yourself.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I was on mute, okay.
It's okay to go ahead with that?
Absolutely.
I just went back and pulled up the minutes for August the 4th, in the August 18th packet has those minutes, and it states that there were four council member present and council member Strawn was absent.
Oh, okay, hold on here. Let me check something.
We'll have Karen look it up.
Yeah, let me check it. What I looked up earlier was, I didn't see that, let me look here. Make sure we have the same, we're on the same page, let's see. Okay, minutes, that was August 2020, August 4th, okay, the end of the meeting. Okay, let's see here. Oh, we do show council member Strawn was absent, it was on, let's see here, is it on the consent calendar? Oh, you know what, that was a typo then, because I have, unless she arrived late, it said under the consent calendar, it says to approve the minutes and to accept the final total compensation study from Coff and Associates motion carried 5-0, but above I do, I do see where she was absent, so that was just an error, a typo on the minutes apparently. So it should be 4-0, I'm sorry, I can make that correction.
Thank you.
Yeah, it says five, but obviously it's only four.
It's just a typo.
Yeah, thank you.
And council member Wilson, did you have any other?
No, just a comment on this, I just pulled that up, because I remember council member Strawn wasn't present.
Wasn't there, right.
Wasn't present, yep.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Woodall? Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Oh, it takes me twice, unmuted every time. No question, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Johnson?
No comment.
Thank you. Council member Strawn?
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I'm definitely voting no, not because I don't think our employees are worth being paid more, it's just that we are a small city and a rural community, and we simply cannot afford to do this. But I want to thank all of our employees, you're all wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's everybody, and I have no questions on the salary schedule, so is there any public comment or question? I think that comment from the Wolves falls to the next issue, I think, the next item on the agenda. So that bit said, are there any hands raised or anyone emailed in any question?
Apparently there are no hands raised.
Why don't we also just make sure that we are explaining how to, how to do the public comment? Rosa, can you put that sheet up again? And so again, in order to, to comment in the Zoom system, you need to raise your hand by dialing star nine if you're on a phone, and, and then you would need to unmute yourself using star six. So if you have any comment on this particular item, simply dial star nine and we'll, we'll give you a few seconds to figure this out and, and just kind of wait to see if anybody's hands pop up. Okay, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing anybody's hands pop up, so I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to adopt the master fee schedule?
Mayor Garance, I would move for the adoption of Resolution number 1464-2020.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
You have a motion and, and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Yes.
Council member Johnson?
Yes.
Council member Strawn?
No.
Council member Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries 5-1, council member Strawn.
4-1.
4-1, but, or, motion carries 4-1. Thank you, and we will move on to item two, adopt Resolution number 1465-2020, approving employment agreements for Riedel Employees Association, Riedel Police Officers Association, and five contract employees. City manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. Item is on page seven of your packet. So, so again, going over the timeline, we have been working as hard as we can to kind of quickly bring these contracts to the council for a vote. And, and so the compensation study was voted and approved of on August 4th of 2020, and so we are now at September 28th of this year, so we've been working on these since that time, along with a lot of other things, but the, the, the main focus of the contract negotiations for this year is obviously the Coff and Associates study. And so there's obviously a component of bringing, you know, city wages to a market competitiveness. And again, we were experiencing, you know, high attrition levels, particularly in 2018 and moving forward. And it was believed that, you know, adjusting the compensation would be beneficial to help alleviate the attrition levels for the city. So there are other components, though, to why the third-party compensation study is really, really important. And one of those is the confidence that city compensation levels are identified via a third party, and are based on a, you know, a methodology that was presented and discussed through the compensation study. So essentially, it provides a degree of fairness that the employees can understand that compensation is not being set for different positions based on arbitrary use, but that it's being based on a professional third party's advice. That, and so thus, each individual's employee, each individual employee's pay is fair, and that of their, of their coworkers. So it creates that equity, and then also for members of the public who may, you know, have questions about how compensation is set and determined in the city of Riedel, that is also addressed through the Coff and Associates studies. So this is really a monumental leap for the city in multiple ways to bring employees towards a competitive level where we can do a better job in terms of retaining employees, but it also adds to the equity and hopefully the cohesiveness of the city organization as we move forward. So that's really another side benefit of this that's incredibly important to, to recognize. So with that, kind of the central group for this year's negotiations was the Riedel Employees Association. The, the contracts here are three years, there's no ongoing stipend during that, after the initial stipend, there's no COLA increases during the three-year contract period, but there is an upfront immediate full implementation of the Coff and Associates Compensation Study. There were also some other needed improvements made to the association's contract, including the increasing the on-call stipend, in, you know, in particular, we have, the city runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we meet employees who can be on-call at 2:00 in the morning to handle various emergencies. And so, you know, we're trying to bring the on-call pay up for those employees at the request of the association, in addition to the removal of alternative work week schedules, which I think were placed in the MOU in lieu of pay, permanent pay increases all this time. And so there have been, there's a need to get back to kind of the normal operation of the city. In addition, the Employees Association requested vacation buyback of about 20 hours annually, that provides them a little bit more flexibility in terms of their time off and their compensation if they need to cash out a little bit of that, of that time, or they're reaching the accrual cap and they need to buy down some of that time. So with the Riedel Police Officers Association, again, we're talking about a three-year contract, no COLAs in that time period, full implementation of the Coff and Associates Study, the study recommendations, and then also the stipend. With our management contracts, we do have, you know, five different contracts to deal with. One of the big problems is that there's five different contracts, they're all very, they can be diverse, and so what we tried to do is get them to be more uniform in their format and in the language that they use, so that we aren't constantly having to interpret, you know, changes in, in, you know, the payroll system or, or anything like that, probably create a little bit more uniformity so it's easier to administer, fair to administer. The, again, the management contracts would be brought to the full implementation of the Coff and Associates Compensation Study, peculiar contracts with the city clerk's final contract agreement. The city clerk had discussed this being her final three-year extension, so in recognition of her, of her final three years, there was the addition of the, of a sick leave cash out, which is already provided to the Employees Association Group, and so that's the same language the Employees Association Group receives. And so again, you know, what we're trying to do is create a more equitable work environment between different groups who perform different functions, but whether it's the police department, public works, or the finance department, everybody has to work together, and there has to be a strong commitment to work as a team, and this is a very important part of providing equitable pay, competitive pay, because the bottom line is that the human resources of this city are the most important asset of the city. We cannot run this organization without experienced employees, and in a small environment like this, it's, it's just very, very, very important that we, that we retain good employees. So with that, I do, I know that the city attorney had some additional comments that he wanted to, to give, and so I'll go ahead and turn it over to the city attorney, and then we can go through questions with the council.
Yes, just briefly, what, a police staff would request as a motion to approve the form of the contract for the Employees Association, Police Officers Association, and all contract employees, subject to the following staff recommended revisions, and provide direction to staff to complete the contract. As to all agreements, we'd seek to change the effective date to the actual commencement date following council approval at the next full pay period or commencement of that, which would be October 11, 2020. I believe that answers one of the inquiries. Second change would be to remove the sick leave buyback cash out provision from the department head contract, except for that of city clerk. In the wastewater and water superintendent contracts, we'd increase the uniform allowance from $500 to $300, and then add the 5% cross-certification incentive for concurrently holding both the grade three operator's license in both water and sewer operations. In the Police Officers Association MOU, we'd add a stipend provision identical to that included in the Employees Association draft MOU. And then finally, we'd authorize, request to authorize the city manager to execute all contracts upon completion of those remaining items. So that would be an essence of form of the motion that we requested.
So I guess we'll go to questions. The one question was from the public comment from Sharon, from the Wolf, the Wolves. One was answered by the city attorney moments ago about the commencement date, and the other one was answered by the city manager when he went over the, the employee, the significant changes that were being made, full implementation and October 11th. Those are the dates and the, the information. So I will now move on to any questions from the council. Council member Strawn?
No, I think we went over everything, all the questions that I had in the closed session meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Just before I call the next council member, city manager perhaps, or Rosa, you could put up that, the, how to call in while we're going through, so that they can, just for a moment, so people, if they need to call in, they can. Thank you. Council member Wilson?
Yes, just, I don't have a lot of questions, but I just have a couple of comments to reiterate what city manager Knop said. Some of the things that had a big impact on this study and its, and the, and the results that have come out of this, at least for myself, was the, the loss of employees that we went through last year, and this, particularly in the wastewater and, in the water department. And what we were seeing is that that, because we had such a large turnover, and then having to retrain people and lose them again, that was putting an extreme amount of stress on the management individuals in those departments. And they weren't, they weren't able to really do their management job because they were busy trying to keep water and sewer flowing in our city. And some of the major things that are hugely important to any kind of, whether it's a CSD or a city, is water and sewer. And if you don't have water and sewer, you essentially don't have a city. And so it's very important, as Mr. Knop said, that we take care of those individuals and retain them for their experience and the effectiveness of our infrastructure. The other area that has, has come even more to light now in recent times is our police force. It is my understanding that Riedel was, was created as a city and, because we wanted a police force. And so for a city this size to have a police force that we do, it's a, it's a pretty special thing, and it's also expensive. But as a result, as we see, we have police officers on-call, and they can respond within minutes rather than hours, and they're also becoming harder to come by because people are simply going out of the law enforcement field because of all the problems we see associated with it. So by bringing our, and I'm not minimizing all their other staff, but those are three that are, that are, that are very expensive, and how this city goes forward, we're going to have to figure that out, whether economic study and figure out what we're going to do if we're going to survive as a city. But that's my reason for supporting this in the way that I do, is that we have to have viable employees going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Wilson. Council member Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. As the city manager described, it's been a many-month process to get through from the initial concept that we will adjust, potentially adjust, employee salaries to fairly reflect the market, and I believe that this council deserves a pat on the back for following through on this, because it, it represents a huge step for not only the city, but our city employees and potential future employees that want to come to Riedel, knowing that they're going to be treated fairly in a, in a marketplace that's, where we have not in the past necessarily treated our employees as fairly as we should. So I've, I, I look forward to having new agreements with our employees, and, you know, a three-year contract is a huge deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Well, I couldn't have said it any better than councilman Johnson, and I want to thank everybody that worked so hard to do this, I want to thank our employees and our city manager, and I'm really glad that we were able to do it this time. That's it.
Thank you. And I would agree with all that was said, I though will also call out the admin staff because as important as the water staff is, as important as the police department is, if they aren't getting paid, they wouldn't be here. So I, I would wager to say the office staff is almost more important than anyone else. So I want to give them as much kudos and as much props as anyone else gets in the staff, they are all excellent employees, I appreciate every single one of them, thank you all for what you've done. Now, are there any public comments, or anyone has called in or raised a hand or emailed in?
And so again, anybody interested in providing public comment, in order to raise your hand on Zoom and be called on, you have to dial star nine. So go ahead and dial star nine, and then, and then the mayor will be able to call on you. We'll give...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and while we wait, a question that come up from... from councilwoman Wilson, actually, on why we were having this meeting, this special meeting out of out of our normal pattern. And the reason is because we have members that are going to be absent in the month of October. And we wanted to get, we wanted to do this compensation package with the entire council. And this was the way we could get it done before October sixth. So that's why we went ahead and had a special meeting. So I just wanted to put that out there in case anyone was wondering, you know, and else. So have we had any call-ins?
There have been no hands raised.
Hands raised? Nothing? Okay. Then.
No email public comment.
Thank you. So let me just get to this motion. I am calling it to for a motion to approve the form of the contracts for the Riedel Employees Association, Police Officers Association, and all contract employees subject to the following staff recommendations, revisions, and directions to staff. As to all agreements, change effective commencement date October eleventh, twenty twenty. As to all management department head contracts, remove the sick leave buyback provision, cash out provision from all department heads contracts except that of the city clerk. In the wastewater and water superintendent contracts, increase the uniform allowance to five hundred from three hundred dollars. Add the five percent cross certification incentive for concurrently holding grade three operators licenses in both water and sewer operations. In the police department, Police Officers Association MOU, add a stipend pay provision identical to that included in the Riedel Employees Association draft MOU and authorize the city manager to execute all contracts upon completion of these remaining items. Is there a motion?
And council member Johnson would so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second Julie.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Woodall?
Yes.
Council member Johnson?
Yes.
Council member Strand?
No.
Council member Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries four one with councilman Strawn dissenting. Are there? That brings us to the end of our agenda. Are there any council members that need to say anything, have a report or anything? Okay, hearing none? Not even really on agenda. I just thought I'd ask. Then we will adjourn. Thank you all. Thank you all, you employees. Yay. And we will adjourn until October sixth, our regular meeting of October sixth, with sixth, which is a Tuesday. Good night, everyone. Have a good week.
Mayor Garance?
Yes.
Russ Gant speaking. Just for the record, to report, there was no action taken in closed session tonight.
Okay, thank you. There was no action taken. Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.